Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We are going to be getting started here shortly, right now. Please make yourselves comfortable. All right, we're going to call the Castle Hills Special City Council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Israel, will you lead us? Thank you, Mr. Israel. Okay, next up, we have citizen comments on non-agenda items. I see some people signed to speak. Is there anybody here to speak on non-agenda items? Okay, then in that case, we will go into new business discussion and possible action on the acquisition of the Ensemble Apartments property on Blanco Road by Texas Essential Public Facility Corporation. I appreciate y'all coming out tonight. This is, uh, there's a lot to understand here, and so I'm gonna do my best to explain it to some of my colleagues and to everybody that's with us and everybody watching virtually. Uh, I've spent uh, the last month or so learning more than I care to learn about PFCs and how it's gonna affect the city of Castle Hills potentially. And I guess the best place to start is the beginning where we were approached by a developer who was going to partner with the county on this public facility corporation. And typically, the way these partnerships work is you need a sponsorship entity, and so it might be the city of Castle Hills, or it might be the county. In this case, the developer went to the county directly. And fortunately, Commissioner Moody and his office said, well, have you considered the implications for the city of Castle Hills? And they had not. And they directed them to come talk with the city of Castle Hills if they were interested in doing a project in the cast city of Castle Hills. Bear County wanted them to have our support. In coming to talk with the developer, Mr. Mark Tolly with Mission DG, he was unaware of the financial stress that the city is under, given that we've raised salaries for police officers to remain competitive. And also had no idea that we're doing additional due diligence in our retirement system to remain competitive for all employees throughout the city of Castle Hills. Uh, it became abundantly clear that this wasn't a good fit for the city of Castle Hills. At which point, uh, the developer, Mr. Tolly, told me if y'all don't do this deal, you understand what the alternative is. And I said, what's the alternative? And Mr. Talley shared that there's another statewide organization called Texas Essential Housing, which was designed to do these types of projects in the Austin area off of SH 130, which is a toll road that has been a little bit slow to take off. And it was designed to help inspire development in that area. There is questionable legality if Texas Essential Housing, which was designed to focus on development in that area in Austin, if they can go do deals throughout the state of Texas. And I say questionable because that wasn't the intent. And I can tell you that as soon as maybe an hour and a half ago, it was up for a discussion at the state legislature where they recently voted to not allow these types of uh, PFC abuses to continue happening. This puts us in a very favorable position, but this does not become law until the governor signs it. And my concern was if we're in a position where we take a tax hit on the rolls of $80,000 this year, only to go up, as we all know, our personal taxes to go. That leaves us in a very unfavorable position as we have additional operating expenses in the city as we're trying to make sure that we have the best police officers, the best firefighters, the best city administrators that we can afford to, um, to fund. And that's why I felt it was so important to bring it forward. I understand that there's little to nothing that we can do because this is a legislative problem. But I also felt it important to make sure that the residents know that we're being vocal, that we're sharing our concerns. And we're doing everything that we can to protect the city of Castle Hills because that's our job. I understand that there's a place and a time for affordable housing, but I think it needs to not be at the detriment of the community. And in this situation, it would be, it would be the detriment of us being able to continue to fund our police officers. Two weeks ago, we made a eight percent increase to the salaries to be competitive. And I think it's helping. But at the end of the day, I wanted to make sure that y'all were aware that we're continuing to fight for the city of Castle Hills. I counsel, I'm happy to field some questions, discussions, comments, or we can go straight to the citizen comments. Mr. Joyce.
Mayor, thanks for your comments. I'm intrigued by, and I wonder if you could expand a little bit more on the, uh, on what happened in the legislature? Because this, in, in reading their local government code, that thing doesn't seem to be, it doesn't seem to be one of the sponsors that the code suggests.
Yes, sir, and I try to go as high level without getting in the weeds, but they need to have a sponsoring entity. And they call them municipal management districts. They created a municipal management district uh, along SH 130. And they're using that as a guise to do these projects throughout the state. Again, questionable legality, uh, they asked for an opinion from the AG and the Attorney General, and the Attorney General said it's a good question. It sounds like a problem for the legislature to fix. Mr. Israel.
Um, just to follow up on that, I had actually posted on my Facebook page an article from Texas Insider from this week, um, which included comments from the Senate sponsor of the bill that is before the legislature now. It's passed through both houses, but there were amendments made to it, and it's now gone back to the House for consideration. If they don't accept the Senate amendments, it would go to conference committee, and we have until Monday night at midnight when the legislature ends to see if it, it goes into, to effect. But for those who may have seen the article, I think it's, it's, it's pretty profound that the Senate sponsor of this said that there are literally billions of dollars that are being taken off the tax rolls as a result of these PFCs. And it was the legislature that enabled them. It's the legislature now that has recognized that the, the situation that it has caused and the abuse of the, of the, uh, situation that is, that is taking place. That doesn't necessarily help us in this situation, but it was, there is at least some recognition of the impact that it has had. Um, I'd like to ask Mayor if you could clarify a couple of things. I suspect I know the answers to them, but I think it's important for our residents to, to understand this. So what I believe I heard you say was that this group of developers, um, did not come to the city of Castle Hills to express its intention, but went directly to Bear County to ask Bear County to create or to be a part of the Bear County PFC to make this happen. Is that, did I hear you correctly on that?
Yes, sir. Bear County and the city of San Antonio both have entities set up to facilitate those already. So they went directly to them with little disregard for the city of Castle Hills.
Yeah, and, and so, um, I know that Commissioner Moody, and I appreciate the fact that Commissioner Moody, uh, immediately said, you need to talk to Castle Hills. In the discussions that have taken place with Castle Hills, has the, have the developers indicated any willingness to talk through the situation with us? Or what was their reaction to the notion of you should go talk to Castle Hills?
I don't think they were excited to come talk to Castle Hills, which is probably why they avoided it in the first place. I, I think it's no surprise the city of Castle Hills has an engaged citizenry. And this wasn't going to be something they could just walk in and do. We were going to ask the hard questions. We were going to have meetings. We're going to get citizen input. And I believe that that was not, um, the most favorable opportunity.
And I, I know that as late as today that you sent an email to them inviting them to be here tonight. I suspect that is not the first time you've communicated that invitation to them. Is that correct? And if you have invited them previously, could you tell us what their reaction to that invitation was?
Yes, sir. And so, um, you know, the developer in full transparency council and everybody here was negotiating largely with me. But I explained to the developer that I cannot unilaterally make decisions on behalf of the city. That I have a council of colleagues that are the ones that actually vote, and any discussion with me is a litmus test for what I believe would be worth their time. And so when I told, uh, Mr. Tolly that his best chance was to come before the city Castle Hills Council and make his ask, he said, I have no desire to go before the city of Castle Hills Council. Which I said, it sounds like you have no desire to work with the city of Castle Hills.
And, and did Mr. Tolly also at any time indicate that he did not see a need to be here because we had no ability to do anything about this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Israel. At one point, Mr. Mr. Tolly said that you realize that any decision that the city of Castle Hills took would be largely symbolic. And I said, well, I understand that, but I also understand that this council, Miss Haley, I'm gonna include you in here because you're new. But this council is committed to transparency and that that wasn't something that we were interested in doing.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important for residents to understand the attempts that have been made to have a dialogue with them and how that was, if you will, forced to come about because of the lack of desire to communicate at any given time with Castle Hills on this. Um, whether to be here tonight, to come to any other council meeting, or even to have engaged with Castle Hills rather than circumventing the city and going to Bear County to try to move this forward originally. My last question, though, if you could help us to understand is, so that I believe was their initial intention was again to go to circumvent Castle Hills, go to Bear County, and now that has evolved into going to Texas Essential Housing. Do you have any sense from your conversations with them or the commissioner's office why they have now chosen to move, uh, past Bear County?
Well, I can tell you that Commissioner Moody, our precinct three Bear County Commissioner, was not supportive of putting us in any kind of additional stress, whether it was financial or related to staffing. It's not in their best interest as our representatives to make our lives more difficult. And that's exactly what that would do.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate those clarifications.
Yes, sir. And just to clarify, there's been a lot of conversation. So if I can answer anything specifically, I'm happy to do so, so long as Mr. Schnell doesn't tell me that I can't. Mr. May.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to observe the way that this developer has gone about their business. It strikes me as what I detest most, which is a bully. And when we have bullies, there's only one way to deal with them. And that is make it very clear where our intention is, and I hope we voice that tonight. If not, uh, in a formal ordinance, obviously, but a resolution uh, that can be messaged. It also appears to me that the best line of response is to remind them of their legislative capabilities and lack thereof. So it seems that what we should be positioning is this. We need to renew our commitment to the county and the San Antonio governments. We want to work collaboratively with them. We need their support on this. The second thing is, uh, we need to be prepared to initiate legal action if necessary, if they're going to go forward. Because it seems wrong to me that they're reaching out for a solution that doesn't match the mandate from the legislature, which is suppressed economic areas needing a stimulus. We don't need a stimulus there and of that sort. And it works as a public condemnation, uh, in a way, it takes off from the citizens, the taxes that would be collected on that property. We've had generations of that particular property being developed, uh, to the advantage of those in the management. We all know about the history. I won't repeat it. Unfortunately, there was a tragedy in, in the, uh, fire that did slow them down, but we're talking about the future. And as far as I'm concerned, from this councilman's perspective, I don't believe in, in backing down from bullies, and I want an unmistakable message to be brought back to these developers. We will fight this.
I agree, Mr. May. Ms. Danes.
Um, I have several questions, but I didn't get them all written down as fast as they were going through my head, but let me start with, okay, so you mentioned that Bear County was not amenable to this, didn't want to put us in a bad position, which I am also very grateful to hear that. Um, so why would Texas Essential Housing that is supposed to be doing things around the, the State Highway 130 corridor, which is nowhere near Castle Hills, why would they agree to that? I mean, would they even agree to that? And why would they agree to that?
So I'm going to speculate a little bit, and I'm going to be watching Mr. Schnell very closely to my cue to not step on uh, my toes and say anything I shouldn't say, but, um, my suspicion, Ms. Danes, is Texas Essential Housing and the group that helps facilitate that is, uh, motivated by money? And if they partner with the city or county, there are dividends that will go to the city and the county as we saw with the last, uh, PFC deal that came before Castle Hills. And so if those dividends don't go to the city or don't go to the county, then they go back to that municipal management district that operates over there.
Okay, yeah, I, I understand that. Um, so they would be the beneficiary of the, of the no longer tax revenue, but that revenue, portion of that revenue goes to the person who's, or the, the, um, group that is supporting this.
I apologize for jumping in, Councilwoman, but I looked at their, um, application for multifamily rental projects to other developers, these people, Texas Essential Housing. And if you look through this, one of the things that's required of the developer is that in a case like this where it's a renovation, they pay 25% of their tax savings annually to these people. The developer pays 25% of their tax savings to Texas Essential Housing, according to their application for multifamily rental projects.
That's a racket. Uh, so if the legislature doesn't stop this in the next few days while the session is still, um, active, I heard, um, Councilman May mentioned that we could potentially bring legal action. Is that, is that a, is that a possibility to stop it?
I think it is, um, a potential possibility. That's probably something that we'd go into executive session for, and I hope to do so after we've discussed everything and we've heard from the citizens as well. Mr. Mr. Joyce, do you have anything else? Miss Haley? Yes, sir.
Quick thought, um, I just wonder if it might be worth contacting the current owner and see what their situation is and wonder if there's, what, what are they looking for? Why are they even talking to these people?
Uh, so I can tell you, that's a good idea, and that's something that Mr. Schnell brought up, and that's my intent following this meeting. But it's my understanding that there's, um, occupancy issues, which lends itself to potentially passing over to another owner. And an easy way to offset that expense would be to implement a program such as this would save you $400,000 just as soon as you get in for the next 75 years, and that, that maintains the same. Okay, um, that case, we will go into citizen comments. Uh, first up, we have Mr. Robert Nguyen. You say your name and address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Robert Nguyen, 209 Garden View. Uh, thank you, first of all, for having this meeting. I think it's very important. I appreciate that, uh, it's, it is a lot of money. It's $80,000 worth of tax revenue, plus I, I would say at least $80,000 of our time, our expenses for our, 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 uh, city employees, our police for this type of, uh, uh, use of this property. And so you're talking about $160,000 a year, which is $12 million over 75 years. So I agree with Councilman May, we need to engage council now and, and let them know that we're going to fight this every which way we can. And that includes attacking the elements of this, uh, PFC. Like you say, it's, it's set up for divided areas. And it's, it's certainly not a blighted area, and it's set up for where housing is necessary and needed, and that's certainly not the case in this, this scenario. So again, please, post haste. Go after them. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Uh, next up, we have Suzette Tom. Okay, um, Douglas Gregory.
Good evening, Council. Find the timing of this very interesting on a long holiday weekend. They try to pull this as the legislature is trying to go home. They try to pull this little stunt. And I think the, the council is correct is the action of a bullying. Um, I hope the council, and I was glad to hear, Mr. May, hope the council is willing to spend whatever it takes to fight this. Because 12 million is an understatement. If you compound the growth of 50% every, or 100% every 10 years, you're looking at $60 million. And that's got to come from somewhere. And it's nothing but to the detriment of the city and the people who live here. But I have several questions. Do we have any type of plan in case this doesn't come out of the legislature in time to be stopped? What is the legal plan? Do, what plan does the city have at all? If nothing happens from the legislature, you, you're hoping it does. Who knows what the legislature will do? Um, you've equated the project with funding police. It's a, it's, I don't know whether there's a direct correlation, but it is that it is funding essential services, and the police are one of those services. Who is on the municipal management district? Are they political appointees? I, I'd be very curious who's on that district of which this building would be a part of. Um, the mayor has said there's a potential possibility we would do legal action. Once again, I would be extremely aggressive on legal action here. If we have to spend a half a million dollars, that's versus the $60 million we would not get over 75 years. I think that is a de minimis amount. And it could go a long way to stopping this in case the legislature doesn't come through. I hope you all have the courage to do that. It's money well spent. If it is done, it shows the city will fight for the citizens. It will fight for the city's future. And if y'all don't do it, who will? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Uh, next up, we have Frank Paul.
Frank Paul, 112 Shalamar. Just a couple of comments. I think the citizens need to know and understand that there are six people up here on this dais that don't want this. We've, Dais has been through one of these before. They will take what steps legally possible and what is available to do that. The other thing is, is we're blessed with having a very fine attorney here who is a city attorney, as far as I'm concerned, probably the best in the city in the, in the area, I should say. And he, this isn't his first rodeo. I guarantee you that he along with counsel, will do whatever is possible. But I suspect suing somebody to say you can't follow the existing law might be a little difficult. But that's why we're, I think we, uh, have an experienced, uh, relationship with the group of here. They're going to look out, and they're going to do the best they can for us. They live here too. And I want to thank, uh, our attorneys again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Um, so counsel, just to clarify, I received a call about an hour ago from Senator Van De Pew who now lives in our area and also works in this arena. And as soon as she got wind of what was going on, she became very engaged, as y'all might imagine, and she's, uh, was the one to call me and let me know that it's waiting for the governor's signature. So at this point, it's as good as done, but there's still a little bit of time until it goes fully into effect. We are planning on going into executive session where I have, um, some ideas that will hopefully have the city attorneys vetting on how best to proceed, but my hope is that we can take a very aggressive stance because, uh, this type of bullying is not going to be tolerated by the city council, Castle Hills. And I'm glad to see the legislator took action against this, uh, this legislative session. And Senator Van De Pew wanted me to share that, I believe it was over 130 House members that voted in support of the reform, and I believe around 20 that voted against. And so this was a bipartisan issue that the majority of representatives agreed that there needed to be some reasonable reform to put some guardrails on this because it's kind of a little bit out of hand. And council, if we have no further comments, questions, then I am going to, uh, read us into executive session. Mr. Schnell.
To go into executive session, Mayor, you should announce that the council is going to an executive session at 6:56 PM on May 25th, 2023 pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney.
Okay, I'll try that, Mr. Schnell. It is Thursday, May 25th, 2023 at 6:57 PM. Uh, we will be adjourning into executive session pursuant to Texas of means acts, chapter 551.07, consultation with attorney. If y'all wish to wait, uh, I can't promise you how quick we'll be, but we'll be back with more information. Thank you. If y'all wish to wait, uh, I can't promise you how quick we'll be, but we'll be back with more information. Thank you.
Oh, and I'm just sort of doing a lot of that. And people are. I mean, just.
Keep wondering, Tom, the things they say.
Um. I don't know.
I didn't want to.
Want. The other. The. I used to. All. You. So. You're. Paul. So. You. So. Now. But. Yeah. I got. Good. Oh. So. I'm. I'm. Uh. Uh. Maybe. That. Going. Back. Coming. From. Anything. Like. And. Uh. We. Not. I. Find. He wants. That. Was. Men. They. Do. You know. He. Get out. He. This. Last. I. Because. He. He was. So. Down. Over. Down. He. For. He. Oh. What? He's. Not. Ready. To. Freak. But. No. None. All. That. And they. They. Well. They. All. What? You know. They. But. Young. That's. They. And. Yeah. And. And. But. They're. Found. Someone. So. Yeah. They still. Tell. The. We. Think. It was. The. So. Uh. That. We. If. We. And. Then. People. Oh. You. Have. I'm. It. I'm. There. Something. Maybe. I'm. Brian. Yeah. Which. I wanted. The. Please. Are. I'm. Off. I. 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 Have. The. Nice. To. Other. I'm. Other. Blank. Well. When. Look. And. I. Later. Own. Hundred. Seven. And. Everybody. News. For. And. Just. Going. To. So. This. Is. This. Is. Yes. Well. Now. Five. Of. Our. Folks. They're. And. There. You. Uh. With. Me. There. Are. You. They're. First.